7:00 PM on Wednesday, December 21st, 2016. This is a Whitestown Town Council regular meeting. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Councilman Russell?
Present.
Councilman Miller?
Running late.
Councilwoman Austin?
Present.
Councilman Baum?
Howdy.
Councilman Wyszick?
Here.
Okay, so first up, if we have some presentations, Dax? No presentations, so let's go to item number three. We have the clerk treasury report and the town management report, which was uploaded today.
Uh, we did get a revised management report today through December 21st. Um, there are some, uh, revisions that we still need to do to that, to the management report, which will be done and completed at the end of the year. Um, coding, cook, uh, just coding errors, um, going through and revising some of those. So Matt can speak to more of that if you'd like. Um, I know that we've all been working hard to make sure that the report is as accurate as possibly can be.
Does anyone have anything to discuss on the town management report?
Oh, I thought with what Dax had said that Matt was gonna give us more information on the coding errors that happened.
Uh, I believe the coding errors began, um, at the beginning of the year. We didn't have line items made, uh, for the most part, uh, when they weren't created when the new budget had come out. So mainly in payroll, that's the biggest one. Um, we had, uh, been using codes that were deemed for other people and we didn't realize it until we went back and checked and found out there were line items. We were really low on their budget lines and that, uh, some people, uh, had been, had a new line created for them and it wasn't in the budget, well, early in the, uh, in Fri, in the accounting software at the beginning of the year and it was missed until nearly the end of the year and when we more or less went through and kind of audited it. So with the help of REEDY.
So during this past month, you're saying that you had to recode the entire financials for the town for the year?
I think that's highly inaccurate. I don't think that we've had to recode the entire town. Um, it's, it's, it's evolved around just a couple of positions.
Okay.
So-
Just a couple of positions, okay.
Yes.
And everything's set up and good to go for next year?
It's going to be completed with REEDY, uh, by the end of this month. Um, and Sherry's been working on it extensively and, and it will get done by the end of this month. We'll have one more payroll this month and it should be completed by then. Um, REEDY's been working very hard to help us get it up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Jeff? Kevin? I, I was a little distressed that we didn't have this in hand prior to, really prior to the meeting tonight. Um, you know, I think we're probably gonna, I, Dax is on the hall, but I have a feeling we're gonna end up having another year-end meeting. Um, do we have any encumbrances? Do we have anything prepared to get us through what, what we have to hold over for next year?
Sherry, you've been working on this the most.
No, it's actually the agenda for next night, what's next, the list of encumbrances that we'll be doing for the year.
Okay, I, I just would hope that, um, you know, I see, I see a number of line items where we've, we're in negatives and we can't end up in negatives and so I just really hope that, you know, we, we've got our spending policy in place. Um, you guys have been working hard on, on getting everything pulled back together and I want to make sure that when we start 2017, that we are hitting the ground running and we don't have this happen again at year-end.
Susan, can I get you to talk a little closer to the mic? I don't have that other earpiece. It's still locked.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Kevin. Okay, so, but we have no encumbrances to discuss, we do have encumbrances? Is this in addition to the agenda that I need to make? We need to make- Okay. That wasn't on today's agenda earlier. Okay, sorry, Karen.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Department reports, did anyone have any concerns about department reports? Or Kevin, were you ready to go on? Were you wanting to talk about water and sewer or? Okay, let's go on to item four, department reports.
No questions.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Department reports?
I have no discussions on it.
Okay. And-
Other than, I will say that, um, the goals and accomplishments of the fire and air police somehow got left out. Uh, police is putting that out right now.
Kevin, did you say that fire did get left out or just police got left out?
Kevin? Did you say that police got left out or just police and fire?
They're, they're, they have the same goals and accomplishments type of sheet that fire has, but somehow got left off of this. Police, he's printing it out right now to, to give to us.
Item number four. If you want to have anything to say about it.
Can I make a comment about departments, department reports?
Oh, well, I was going to make several, forgive him a chance.
Yes, ma'am. I can do that, I can do that, I can do mine at the end when I do my town administration report.
Susan? Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, as I was going through the department reports and I know that we have, um, have some other things where it'll mesh over into it. I am, I am so pleased with so much of our department reports for this year and their, their achievements. They have exceeded expectations. So, over and over and over again and we don't often say thank you enough to our departments, you know, to Jason, Director, DPW, Utility, the water, the sewer guys, the Fire Department, our police, our Planning Department, who takes an awful lot of grief too, and our Parks Department. We don't say thank you enough, so I wanted to make sure that all you guys knew how pleased I was when I saw some of the year-end expectations that had been exceeded and you guys hit it on the ballpark again and thank you so very much for that.
A second then.
Agreed.
All right, anyone else before we let Dax come up? Dax?
Well, you probably just said what I want to say too. Um, uh, we had a phenomenal year. A lot of moving parts here. It's a changing town, a lot of rules to, to pay attention to, um, from the state. Um, we, like I said, we've gone from that startup mode, uh, to a second stage company. Um, and I'm proud of, uh, the staff and the department leaders, uh, both chiefs, Jason, Lauren, Tanya, um, Nicole, who heads up the utility building office, I'm probably gonna miss somebody, Nathan, um, uh, Dave Taylor, who, uh, you all don't, uh, in the course of evolution, we've decided that the Building Department, um, probably should be its own department and so Dave has been running the Building Department show, uh, and has done a phenomenal job. Lauren has been running the Planning and Community Development Department. I was just going through those goals and what we did in February, on February the 3rd, you, you met as a council and we kind of gave you, uh, town administration type goals and I think, um, the exception of a couple, that we met them all. Um, infrastructure-wise, the creation of boards and commissions, um, organizing some of the information that we keep and organizing the way that we send it out. Um, and, uh, our PR is, uh, you won't find any better. Tanya, I don't know where she is, but, uh, it's amazing how, uh, I'll go somewhere in Indianapolis and somebody will tell me, you guys are always on TV, you're always in the paper and you're booming and you're doing great. So, uh, I just wanna, at the end of the year meeting here, commend, if you, if all department leaders would stand up, please. I know that there's not a lot of public, I wish there were public here. Um, if you lead a department, Chuck, where are you Chuck? Where'd you go? Good grief.
And Tanya, standing up there?
Give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? All right. We will move on to item number five on the agenda, public request to speak. Did we have anyone sign up to speak on any topics? Okay. All right, we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the consent agenda, including approval of meeting minutes, 11-16, claims, expenses town, revenues town, both November, December, uh, 1 through 15 expenses, December 1 through 15 revenues, utility claims, RD, water operating, water capacity, wastewater operating, and approval of expenditures and disbursements of $2,500 in donations from the police donation fund.
Second?
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no? Motion's adopted five to zero. Uh, before we go on to section seven, are there any changes to tonight's agenda from anyone?
Mr. President, I'd like to amend the agenda under new business to a item O, a transfer appropriation ordinance 2016 dash 49. Second?
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no? All right. Agenda is amended, what, what number did you say that was?
O.
O, but 2016 dash-
Dash, uh, 49.
Okay. All right, up first, we have unfinished business.
This keeps, it's like a bad penny.
The, uh, RFP for Town Solid Waste Services.
Um, I got feedback from two of you, uh, from Councilman Wyszick. I haven't had enough time to, to read yours yet and then you, you did what I like to do to you, which is the 11th hour submission, so, uh, I, I do have feedback. I, I think what's happening here is I keep putting this in front of you with these ideas of what to put in the scope. Um, I think we have a pretty good idea from the two that have submitted ideas. I think what I'd like is just for the staff to, um, finalize the scope with recommendation from additional staff members and council and then get this RFP out to the companies, um, as soon as possible.
I think that's a good idea.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And, I mean, anyone who still wants to provide input, still can. You've been through that, so.
So our goal would be to get it out first of the order. Just quick. Hey.
Do we need a motion, Steve, or?
If you can, if you would like to authorize Dax to put it out, so, I mean, ultimately the bids will come back. You guys will have to come back and approve the low bid and then we would have to implement a rate to pay for it. Um, so there's, there's a lot of work to be done still and stuff that'll come back to the council, but it, it would be helpful probably just to have an approval for Dax to go ahead and put it out, out the bid, finalize it and put it out the bid.
I agree.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize Dax Norton to, uh, compile all of the information and put out for, put out an RFP for Town Solid Waste Services.
Second?
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no? Motion is adopted five to zero. So move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we're going on to new business. Up first, we have ordinance 2016 dash 46, which is the ordinance establishing wages and salaries for 2017.
You'll have to pardon, these were originally, uh, a matrix that was attached on your agenda. I changed it late today, uh, Chief Westrich told me that I did not need to change it. So this is what was original and this is what should be attached to the ordinance if you so choose to approve. And so, Matt, there are, uh, matrices that are attached to these ordinances here that they're going to sign and these would need to be attached and said, or attached to them.
So what changes are there from, uh, last year?
Uh, I provided, uh, I don't have a copy of the 15 or the 16 matrix in front of me. I did provide that in the agenda, but I, I can go through here and, um, I can go through here and based on the budget, tell you what changes there are. You have added the Assistant Town Manager of Operations, which is an additional staff member not to exceed 60,000 up in town administration. Uh, my wage didn't change, uh, the Executive Assistant Court, court wage did not change. I don't believe it changed. If it changed, it would change very, very slightly. Um, Facility Maintenance Manager, uh, this, that was in the budget for 50,000, so it, it went into the matrix at 50,000. Um, Consignment Specialist, uh, changed from 12 an hour to 13 an hour, not, or not to exceed number. Uh, intern has stayed the same. Court Treasurer line, nothing has changed. Uh, the planner line, uh, we did change, uh, what is now the Administrative Assistant. Um, uh, if you remember during the budget conversations, we had talked about an Assistant Town Planner. What we think can happen is that the, the Brittany who currently works as the Administrative Assistant can also share the duties of Assistant Town Planner. Uh, Lauren and I have had a conver, uh, many conversations about that idea. Uh, Lauren is fully on board and what we would do is, um, do, do a comparative study of what Assistant Town Planners make and, and pay her a wage that would be equal to, um, what, what, what the comparative wage would be. So that, that, that would be another, the line has changed from 35,000, uh, to 45, to 45,000, additional 10,000. Um, Building Department Director, I believe, has stayed the same or may have increased slightly from last year. Uh, you've added another Commercial Building Inspector where there was only one, there's now, uh, there's now, there's now three in the Building Department where there was only two and then you've got the Code Enforcement Officer, which is a, a, a bring, we brought that over from last year. You've, we've created, in the budget, we created the Department of Public Relations. Um, I think Tanya is, I think that department's one of the most, uh, valuable departments that we've had over the course of the last couple of years, um, in getting our brand out there and making certain, certainly with economic development and human capital development. Um, and so in the budget, um, just 72,000 and then in the lit budget, I believe we had put, placed in there the Assistant Director of Public Relations and that was a $55,000, um, position.
I, I thought we had talked about keeping that as Assistant Manag, Assistant Town Manager for Public Relations.
We did, I'm not sure we totally approved setting up the separate position. I don't recall it.
Well, the budget that you passed, well, you don't pass a specific budget, so it doesn't have to be that way, right? They don't, they don't pass a line item, they don't pass a, they, they just pass the major funds, so it certainly doesn't have to, certainly doesn't have to be that way.
I know we discussed it, I don't know if we ever finalized.
Well, and a reminder again, the salary matrix is a proposal of what's going to make, get us through the year. It doesn't mean that each of these positions has been funded by us for that, but it, it covers us in case they do get funded throughout the year.
That is correct and I would say, uh, well, you haven't asked me for-
But it gives them the authority to go ahead and hire at it, as long as they're under that level, right?
Depends.
I mean-
Yes.
Yes.
If the money's in the budget and it's in the salary ordinance-
I can move forward.
And funds are actually available-
If funds are available.
Right.
The town could hire Dax or whatever department, maybe hire somebody to fill that, if funds are available. Because they're basically your three-year clients.
Can you, can you go print off last year's sal, salary ordinance for us all? Just so we can take-
I'd like to make sure we take care of everybody's-
Dax?
Uh, this ordinance bumps everybody who's existing.
Cause I, I see on here, the town judge salary is wrong.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Dax, I thought we raised the pay for the town-
Yeah, I don't think this is the right one because, like, you're not-
This is the same one you just asked us to trash.
You're not to exceed isn't correct either.
It's a, it's a little different than the one you just asked us to let go.
Chief Westrich, since you're causing me this pain. Yes, so, so the difference is, here's what ha, here's what's happened here. I've, I've disseminated this to everybody and I've tried to get it back in copies and obviously that has gotten lost way in the translation, so, um, it's, it's been a complete and total headache. Um, I think the only thing that would be, the judge should have been raised, yes, to 15,000, so, but I think that's the only thing that you'll find is not correct for the 2017 salary matrix. But yes, I will go print out copies of 16s if you'd like.
I think that would be helpful. Would you guys like to move ahead and then come back to this? Can we, can I get a motion real quick?
Move, Mr. President, I move to table this until the end of the agenda.
Second?
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no? Agenda is amended. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 2016 dash 47. Good evening.
Hello. Um, so this is the Spalding property, if you're not familiar with it. Um, it's kind of next to Susan's house, just a little bit down the way. Um, it's alongside where the new bypass is gonna be, um, that the county's doing and kind of south of where the trail was going to be coming through. There's a map in the ordinance that is attached to the agenda. Um, so the Plan Commission had created a PUD review committee specific for, um, all the new PUDs that are gonna be coming in. Um, our comprehensive plan that we had just created had listed this property out as one of the community development areas and within these, we think it'd be ideal to just create as a PUD regardless. So the committee came back with a favorable recommendation to Plan Commission and here we are, so, any questions?
What was the Plan Commission vote again? Was it unanimous?
I think it was a four to, yeah, four to zero. We're missing a few members. A lot of the text within the PUD, um, reverts back to the UDO, so a lot of the uses, uh, within each district, I guess, if that's what you want to call them, um, revert back to this, this Spalding PUD, but we do prohibit some uses such as some indent, uh, intense industrial properties, uh, so we kind of, that's kind of the feel that we're aiming at with this PUD. And every time that anything, say that they want to sell this property off to any developer, it's gonna have to go through the Plan Commission approval process, just like the Anson PUD or the GCI property does.
Lauren, could you remind me, with the, uh, PUD committee that first was part of drafting all of this, um, will they have any involvement in the development as it continues?
So the Plan Commission can ask the review committee to look at the architectural standards, um, whenever there is some sort of development coming through, so yeah, they, they'd be active in it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I think it's very fond for Mr. Spalding to know that his property is on a major thoroughfare that will be coming through, so he's trying to be proactive versus reactive and, um, we've been working very closely with him and his attorney, Melissa, who's also here, so if you have any, you know, detailed questions about what he's proposing for his land, um, we try to reflect that within this PUD itself. Questions? Comments?
Does this require two reads? One read?
Okay.
Lauren, could you remind me what is proposed for zones one, two, and three that you have identified on the map?
That's the whole property itself. So within the PUD, remember we didn't do the Euclidean zoning?
Right.
So it was just free-for-all, there's no, any districts necessarily, but, um, within a tax parcel, each one of those is-
Okay.
Yeah, each lot necessarily is within the property.
So those numbers are just, these are the parts, these are the parcels within the PUD?
Correct.
But the PUD is set up so that as the developer comes in, they can come up with their concepts for the different portions, but we haven't said that this is residential, this is commercial or anything like that.
Someone like to do a first read?
Oh. Give me one second. Ordinance 2016 dash 47. And on the bottom of the page. An ordinance adopting the proposed Spalding Commons Planned Unit Development PUD ordinance.
Before we move on to a, a potential motion and vote, are there any questions from the council?
No.
No? All right, I'd entertain a-
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules to adopt ordinance 2016 dash 47 tonight.
Don't, no, I just suspended.
Don't have to.
Oh, we're good? Wonderful. Uh, ordinance number 2016 dash 47, an ordinance adopting the proposed Spalding Commons Planned Unit Development PUD ordinance. Mr. President, I move we adopt the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no? Ordinance is adopted five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next we have Ordinance 2016 dash forty-eight. Would someone like to give a first read?
Ordinance 2016 dash forty-eight, an ordinance establishing certain enterprise funds concerning the Whitestown Department of Storm Water Management.
Can we suspend?
Well, I was gonna ask Dax if that was his desire.
Yeah, we didn't have staff reports with this.
I think, uh.
Steve, does this need?
I think we need to go ahead and do that.
This needs two readings?
Simply be.
I know that, it, it came up because this, we need a place to put the stormwater grant. And so, that's why it was a good time to go ahead and create these funds. So, I don't know when that grant money comes in, but it would be good to have this established where it is so that Matt can put money in these funds.
Does it require two reads?
Yes, it, it would require two reads.
All right, we, they do, Dax said he would like for us to suspend the rules if we so desire to get this through tonight.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules to adopt Ordinance 2016 dash forty-eight, I mean, forty, yeah, forty-eight tonight.
Second.
Go ahead.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right.
Ordinance 2016 dash forty-eight, an ordinance establishing certain enterprise funds concerning the Whitestown Department of Storm Water Management. Mr. President, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 2016 dash forty-eight.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted five to zero. All right, up next we have Resolution 2016 dash forty-eight regarding the lease documents for Whitestown Police Department vehicles. Chief?
This is in preparation for, uh, the lit hires, uh, next year. And, uh, I'll be starting to take, uh, orders for vehicles in January. And, uh, so, this is the first step in that, that process, uh, working with Dennis Otten, uh, getting the resolution and the opinion of council, um, out in front. I think this is the extension of lease, uh, number nine on our original Huntington lease. And the, um, build document, I believe, was a part of your packet with all the different vendors. Everything is pretty much coming the same as it, it has been in the last, uh, four builds. Um, the only difference is, instead of doing fo, four like we normally do, this time we're doing six.
Chief? This is all marked vehicles?
All marked vehicles.
Will be marked vehicles?
Yes, sir. These are all, all fully marked.
So, we're not changing any of the admin vehicles up?
We're not doing that this year because of lit going through. We need the six, uh, so these will all be marked cars.
Any questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2016 dash forty-eight. A resolution of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving extension of lease, equipment lease document for the Whitestown, uh, police department.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right, up next we have Letter E, Resolution 2016 dash forty-nine. Dex?
So, uh, another economic development project, I think is a good one. Sanders, um, has been a corporate resident for a long time. And whenever we have one of those come and say we want to expand, we're gonna stay and expand, those are good economic development projects. I think what I'll do is have, um, Representative Sanders come up, kinda give you a, um, a brief summary of what they're doing, and then, um, what the, uh, abatement ask is for what their expansion is. So, Katie? Come on up.
Thanks very much.
Hi, Katie.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. Happy holidays. Um, thanks for the opportunity to come before you. I will just give a real high-level overview, and then I'm gonna introduce Ian McKenna with Sanders, who can give you a little more color on the company. But really appreciate your consideration of our tax payment request. As you'll probably see in the documents, um, this is a, a retention project, but also an expansion, uh, and that would result in the creation of some new jobs. Specifically, we've got, um, roughly thirty-nine existing full-time positions, and, um, the objective of creating twenty new positions over the next couple of years. Uh, the investment being made is kinda split out into two buckets of real property investment and per, personal property investment. Um, for real property, it's about five hundred forty-five thousand, um, dollars. And personal property is about eight hundred and five thousand dollars. So, um, I, while I know you've seen a whole range of capital investment sizes for many of the projects that are coming to Whitestown or expanding in Whitestown, this reflects a significant investment, um, that is being financed by the company itself, um, which is a privately held firm, and has been very active in the community. So, um, it's a big project, it will enable them to enter into some space that, um, I'll, I'll have, uh, Mr. McKenna talk about a little bit, um, in terms of supporting, um, new growth in commercial and industrial development. But it's really exciting, I think, and a potential game changer, um, for this industry locally that has kinda had a monopoly going on. So, that's really exciting, but, um, the, the tax abatement is gonna be really important to enabling them to do this successfully. So, um, I will pause there, maybe we'll do a little overview on Sanders, and we can answer.